Okay, let's call this meeting to an end and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is the June 5th Farming complaining board meeting. If you're here for something else, you're at the wrong place. Um, most of you know, but the emergency exits are over here in the corner and then the one you came in. Please silence all your electronic devices, watches, phones, everything, so that you don't interrupt us. Those of you that may not have been here in a while, when I turn on the mics for the room so you guys can speak, remember that it picks up every conversation. So if you got a sidebar conversation, it'll be recorded on YouTube for the rest of eternity. So remember that. We will be following the rules procedures adopted by this board January 3rd. Uh, make sure you signed into the sign in sheet over there if you didn't. And with that, we'll start with the approval of the May 15 minutes. Everybody get a chance to review them? I guess it's just the three of us. Remember, yeah, use your mics so that they pick it up. So do I have somebody to move the minutes?
Move.
Move by Doug, second by.
Yeah.
Tim, any other comments? All in favor saying if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. One abstention since he wasn't here. Okay. That takes care of the minutes. Legal notices were published May 29th of 2024 in the Daily Messenger. First item up, order of business is continued re-subdivision, the preliminary three lot re-subdivision for the Fowler Family Trust. Public hearing is continued. Okay. Where do we want to start with this one, Ron?
With the applicant.
Okay. You guys want to tell us what's been going on since we last talked? Yeah, Jim, just give us a little update on what's been going on. I know we requested some additional information. Yep.
Um, is the zoom on?
It is, I believe. Zoom is on and the mics are on.
Hopefully Jared's gonna jump in shortly. Normally, he's pretty punctual.
Did you allow him in? Just saying, we're. Yeah, I guess so. Ah, there we go. Now we don't count him in. Yep, there he is. J H. Yep. What was my wife's name? Yeah, is that you?
Yeah.
You'll see that on YouTube, you know that. All right. And everybody's on mute though, I think.
These two people have their cameras off.
Hi, this is Jared Hurt. How are you?
Hey, okay, we can hear you.
All right.
All right. Your turn. Go ahead and tell us what's going on.
I'm gonna turn it over to Jared at this point.
Okay, Jared, it's your, you're on the podium. What's up?
I am on the podium. So I understand we're before the board tonight. Um, I did see the proposed resolution, looking for a continuation, which I understand the purpose of that continuation is to allow Mr. Baker to conduct some further studies on the subject property. Uh, I did speak with Ron Brand earlier today and you know, I guess my, my concern with this is that we, on behalf of the applicant went forward. We did provide the report from Mr. Baker, which did detail the types of soil on the property and also concluded or gave his conclusion as to the viability of the project in terms of constructing a home on the subject property. And I understand the board has, has some additional questions or, or areas of concern that it has raised. But my issue is it's, it's expensive for my client to go through this process of going through and getting borings. I talked to Mr. Baker earlier. Um, and are we putting the cart before the horse, I guess, is, is kind of one of my concerns in the sense that it's gonna be probably another $3,000 for uh, Mr. Baker to go there, do some borings, take some additional samples. It seems like some of these things would be better addressed at the time of building permit. So I'm just trying to get some clarity from the board if this is, um, you know, sort of the last thing that we need to do. Um, or if there are any other issues that the board seems that are still open that need to get addressed.
Well, certainly we can check with the board if he, you know, if we've staffed him in, but I'll tell you straight up from my standpoint as the chairperson. Um, my concern, especially in this case, is that if we don't know what the soils are, especially in the building area, how do we know the dwelling can be built and how close can that be built to the cliff? Or the steep slope, whatever you want to call it. So I think the, from my standpoint, I think that I don't understand how we could complete the environmental record if we didn't know for a fact that a house or a dwelling could be built on the proposed lot. But I'll turn it over to Ron because Ron's more of an expert than I am at that. So Ron, it's up to you.
Yeah, the, the, the need for the information is the only thing that I'm aware of that the neighbors and the residents have asked clarification of.
Hmm.
They provided a, a rep, a letter from an appraiser. Um, I believe that in the town's best interest, they have the soils report from Mr. Baker. And, uh, otherwise, you know, you can request it if they don't want to give it to you. You always have the option of positing it and going that route, which we really don't want to do.
Yeah, is, is, and I apologize, I can't see. Is, is Jim Baker there?
He's here. Yep.
Yeah.
He is. Um, and I guess, Jim, I would turn it over to you because you are the, whether you want to be or not, the expert in this area. Um, and you've heard the comments from, from the planning board and also from Ron to perhaps maybe address some of those concerns.
Yep. And you're welcome back, by the way.
Thanks.
Been a while.
Yep. So I went out and looked at the parcel initially before the survey was done.
Right.
And initially thought I was reasonably comfortable that it was a buildable lot. If you build a house on that, the, the final design was gonna impact just where you put it and, you know, how it would be situated. But I felt it was reasonable that the slopes were reasonably stable based on the, the tree growth and, you know, looking at conditions there. Um, I read the letter from the appraiser, the land appraiser who had some concerns. And I also got the data from the site civil engineer, the survey, who further defined the slope and it's a slope, but it's certainly not a super steep slope. And if you saw my May letter, I, I did some analysis and, you know, looked at the building code provisions that dictate a certain setback at the top of the slope relative to the structure and the foundations. And thought there were a whole plethora of scenarios that would make it code compliant. Uh, you know, based on the height, you could set the building way back. Or if you want to be closer to the slope face, you could drop the elevation down as in put in a basement. And all of those would be code compliant configurations. So that, that's what the code requires. Um, I also applied my own, you know, geotechnical engineering background and said, you know, do, do I think this is a reasonable thing to do based on the data we have now? And I, I felt comfortable the first time I wrote the letter and I felt more comfortable the second time when I had real survey information and a chance to really review the code issues. So, you know, the, the other piece that Venetia gave me was a real defined definition of the soil types, you know, the Howard soils. And, yeah. There were some meeting minutes last time that said where that data come from. Just for background, it, it comes from the, you know, the Department of Agriculture, the United States, the Soil Conservation Service. They did mathing, they did a certain amount of exploration and came up with broad swaths of what they expect the soils to be there. So, you know, I, I didn't just pull the data out of the air. And, and based on that, I'm very comfortable that it's a, it's a buildable lot. I, I haven't done test falls on the parcel. If it's deemed that I have to do that, then I, I guess Jim will have to decide if he wants to have that done or not. But based on the data I had and my experience in the area, I'm pretty comfortable. That's why I wrote the letter twice so to speak.
Okay. Ron?
You want to talk about your conversation you had today with MRV?
So, yep, I, I saw that MRV had sent a list of, you know, three or four items. And I took a look at that. Jared passed it on to me. And basically those are special inspections, things that are typically required as part of a, a structural engineering set of plans to build a building. And those are things we, we tell them they should include as part of the testing inspection process during, during construction. They're part of the building code. So we do a lot of commercial, you know, high-rise type of work and, and that's the level of review and oversight and testing that gets done on those. I would say there's probably a lot of houses in the town that get built with that, that complete level of, of code-driven oversight. But certainly, um, I would say that if you require that level of code-driven oversight, then it would eliminate the sense of the potential unknowns in that someone would have to go out and check conditions during construction and confirm that they are as reasonably stable as I believe they are based on my analysis today. So, but they are, they are a building code certificate of occupancy checklist. They're really not designed to be, they're really not intended to be a, a pre-designed requirement. They say, you know, be sure that it complies with the, with the design report. Well, you have to have a design report to, uh, to say it's compliant. They say be sure that the fill is all placed and compacted to 95%. Well, he's not gonna place any fill on the site.
Right.
He only has a permit and set of plans and proceeds. So, you know, the, the items really don't apply to the design and the approval stage. They apply to uh, C of O, you know, somewhere between permit set and issuing a certificate of occupancy. That's a checklist for the code enforcement people to say, did all these things get done? Yes, therefore you comply with the building code requirement.
Ron?
Yeah, I believe we have a guest online from MRV tonight.
Alan, can you hear us?
I can, indeed.
Oh, yep, got you now. Alan, did you hear the question? Or I guess they wanted you to jump in and comment on the uh, conversation today with, uh, between somebody and Jim.
Lance.
Lance.
Yeah, um. My understanding was there was additional conversation that kind of explained more of where we're coming from, at least after that email was sent out. Is that correct?
I can't answer that. I wasn't.
Yeah, we weren't, we weren't privy to that, I don't think.
I, I spoke with Lance and wanted to understand the intent of this list of items. Um, I explained that, you know, I use this list because it's building code requirement for code enforcement and compliance and certificate of occupancy type situation. And, uh, I got an understanding from him that that's the way they intended it as well, that those are the standards that, you know, construction should be held to during the construction process.
Anything else, Dave, Alan?
Just taking a look at my notes here, just to make sure. One second here.
Certainly, my, I mean, my concern, I don't know about the rest of the board, is that if we finish the environmental assessment, which would give the zoning board the ability to move forward and do their zoning, um, things. Um, I, I'm concerned that we get to a point where we're get ready to build, because at some point all of a sudden we find that we can't build. You know, because of some type of soil conditions or something like that. It's a, it's a unique situation, I think, at least in what I've been doing in 25 years of building that close to a slope. Um, so I, I mean, that's certainly what my comment is. Jim, you want to make a comment?
Yeah, uh, let's make an assumption here.
Okay.
The assumption is I got 10 million in assets.
Okay.
Is there any reason I can't build a house on that lot? No.
That's it? Okay. I mean, I understand where you're coming from. I mean, so. Alan, anything else?
I don't think I really have anything I could add beyond what Lance discussed with Jim.
Okay, Ron?
I have nothing more to add. I just asked for the, um,
Right.
information from the town engineers. I got it in the slide report.
Okay. Anything from code?
Nothing.
Do you have any discussion? This is a public hearing. Anybody want to speak for or against this application? A public hearing. Anyone want to speak for or against this application?
Me.
Go ahead, Jim.
Okay.
Uh, Jared, you still there?
I am.
Um, do we want to address anything about the town, um, stating anything about conditioning that this test has to be done when we do the building permit?
No, so the, the, the question I have right now, I guess, for the board itself is, um, does the board feel comfortable, given the comments from Mr. Baker, that it is not going to request or require a boring at the property? I mean, are you comfortable with his comments that he's sufficiently, um, addressed everything?
Well, that would be the next step. It'd be to, to, to talk to the board members once we get done with the public part of this and see where the board members come down. I mean, that would be the next step. So do we have anybody else in the room that wants to speak about this project? Because if you do, you need to speak now. Nobody? Okay, you, I don't think anyone's online. Is, is everybody online that's to speak for or against this application? Okay, we'll start with Tim. Tim, what are your thoughts on this? Do you think we should have the boring or do you think we can approve the environmental record without the boring?
That was a recommendation from our engineers, correct?
I believe, Ron, where did the recommendation came from? A combination of discussions with engineers and?
I asked the town engineer, what do we need in the way of soil documentation for the project?
Right.
And they sent me back and he knew which is in the, in the resolution.
Right.
And there's nobody here from the engineering firm tonight to explain whether what they've heard here tonight is acceptable or not. So my only suggestion to you is you continue this to the 19th.
And especially if, if Lance isn't here and Alan doesn't have the information. Okay. Doug or Tim?
Yeah, that, that's kind of where I'm coming from. I would like to hear more specifics from our engineers to determine before I can decide whether or not that's needed. I mean, I understand, uh, based on this letter that I'm looking at, there is an assessment of the type of soil and the fact that there could be a building on this lot. But that's not based on core samples. It's based on, uh, information that was provided by, I don't know. I can't remember what was said about that.
Right. Okay. So you're basically saying we should continue until we can get basically Lance to come in and?
I need to hear it from him.
Okay. Doug?
I got a couple of questions. Um, with the boring, are they true borings or were you just gonna do like split spoons or something like that?
No, we, we did not do any borings on the study.
What would you be proposing here? What, what I guess have, like, uh, what have we asked, you know, as, as, you know, from the town engineer? What have they, you know, said borings or were you a split spoon? Were you taking a sample and say that before? But I guess the, the little bit of concern I have is some of those maps, you know, some of them were for years ago and not always all that accurate, but because of the, you know, accuracy of, of where we need to find layers out there. Would split spoons be something that might be a little bit more quicker for you guys to do and just do a visual classification of that soil in the field as opposed to running it like a true, you know, boring out there?
Alan, what is split spooning?
Oh, sorry.
It's, I don't understand what that?
But instead of having like a big drill, like typically on commercial projects, you go out there and drill it. And the drill rig has, you know, the casing basically in front of the ground, the hammer drops on it. It determines the number of blows and that gives you kind of the soil uh, strength that you, and then you can also pull the core sample out and then do a classification of the soil or run even further tests. A split spoon typically would only go down three, four feet, but you would be able to get into that upper layers. And when you pull that out, would it's like a, kind of like a ice hawker, you know, twists the handle. It drives hollow tube down into the ground that basically pulls out a sample of the soil. Um, by doing that, you can then look at the soil and, you know, the texture case of the geotop, you can, you know, visually classify that soil as confirming this is what the, the Ag map showed.
And according to the letter, it said that Soil Conservation Service mapping indicates with the soil types.
Yeah, that's kind of what I referred to as Ag map. Those, those have been around for, for years and years. They're usually fairly accurate, but when you're looking for the precision like, because in this case.
If, if you were asking me what could be something basic I could do to confirm the Soil Conservation Service mapping, I would say that get out there with a bat coat and dig some four to six foot deep holes to review and confirm the soil classification and that the soils are stable in places I believe they are. That wouldn't necessarily require getting a machine out there. So it was gonna be a little bit of disturbance, some trees knocked down or whatever to get to the areas. But that would be something relatively straightforward.
Okay, I was just thinking maybe a less invasive procedure, not an idea where.
But even at that, that's less than the $3,000 that?
Well, the, the, the $3,000 is not including the people to come in to dig the holes, you know, the property. We're talking another two grand on top of that. That's expensive stuff.
Yeah, I didn't think it was cheap. Nothing. It's cheap.
Yeah, and I guess I still have some confusion as to, at least as it relates to the board. Is the concern the, the actual viability and ability to build a home on this lot? Or is it the, the impact that the home would have on the slope? But what is it that, um, is concerning the board that they're looking for clarification?
Alan?
Uh, well, let me try to clarify. Lot C has some setbacks that are required from the front building line, which is the wide part of the lot, not the, the, uh, like pole.
Right.
Um, we don't have, um, information. I mean, let me ask this question of you. You, you've got a new surveyor now and a new map. Uh, this new map that has been prepared by Venetia. Uh, is it based on information that they got from your previous engineer?
Venetia's been the only person who's been doing the maps. There wasn't anybody. All the maps have been done to him.
Even, even the ones with APD engineering on it?
And all the maps that you would submit to the town have all been through, you know. You may, I don't know if, um, APD submitted some maps that were basically for clarification of things, but all the official map has been done by Venetia. We did a survey that depends on the surface. Yeah, yes. Okay. APD has done nothing up there.
Just the site plan, so didn't they prepare?
Just the site.
But they didn't do the survey?
The, 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 it did all the rest of it.
Okay. Adrian?
I mean, I was just gonna say that I'd love to hear what Lance has to say. So I'll do a little more clarification, make sure we're on page. The communication, because they communicate and, you know, I get, we're hearing this and that, but I'm here.
No, I, and I tend to agree. My biggest concern is maybe it's because I'm not an engineer. Uh, it's be, it's, I don't want to input in a situation to approve the environmental record and say everything is clean and green and ready to build. And then turn around and find out that, oh hell, it can't be built there because soils are off and we can't build within X number of feet of the steep slope or whatever you want to call it. So thus now we've gotta go back a ways and oh, by the way, we can't put a, we don't have enough space on the parcel that's buildable to build, to build, to build, to build a dwelling. So that's where I'm coming from. I don't want to put the town in a situation where we approve the environmental record on something that we're using old environmental or old agricultural data on when it's a relatively sensitive, at least in my perception, a sensitive lot because of the shape of the buildable area. It's limited, let's be honest. It's a very limited town. Like you said, for $10 million, you can build almost anything. But the point really is, is if you don't build on it and you sell it to somebody else, it's a buildable lot and all of a sudden they go, but why did the town let me buy this as a buildable lot when it's not buildable? I mean, stop me when I'm wrong, but those are my types of concerns from the town standpoint and from the planning board standpoint. Jim?
Well, I think I've heard at Ron's mouth that Jim here is probably one of the better people for analysis for soil.
I don't disagree with that at all. I agree completely.
And we've, he's done two reports now.
Right.
That he's professional opinion. Is a very buildable lot. I don't know why we have to go farther than that because when somebody goes to build on that piece of property, they're gonna have to do the core sample. They're gonna have to determine based on the core samples what type of house they're gonna put on the property, whether it has to be a slab, whether it has to be 12 feet deep, six feet deep. Those core samples are gonna tell them what they have to do. But it is gonna be a dwelling on the property.
Yes, Jim.
Yeah.
Mr. Baker.
Yeah.
Um, the soils classification that are shown on the Venetia drawings.
Mm-hmm.
Where'd they come from?
It came from Soil Conservation Service mapping.
And, and they could cite that on the map somehow that what the source of that was?
Absolutely. And I believe they put that map together based on a request from one of the town boards that wanted to see the soils types. Maybe because the assessor had talked about concern for some sensitive soil. So Venetia mapped the soils to show what the soil types are on the slope.
And that, that study that you're talking about, is that the Yates Ontario County Soil Report?
Right.
I've looked at that report. I don't see those soil classifications in that report. So I'm questioning where they came from. I'm also questioning the fact that they, Venetia associates have color coded and grouped two different soil classifications in one general area without distinguishing where they are. And I've been around a couple of days. And I, I really am shocked to see for the first time in 50 some years, two soils having identical, identical, identical characteristics. Is that possible?
Kind of catching me a little flat footed, so I'm rotating back. Are you asking if different soil classifications can have the same engineering properties in terms of my concerns? Yes.
The Venetia map has a blue line. The Venesia map has a blue line wide going across the slopes. And they're saying within that blue line, there's two soil classifications. But they don't distinguish where they are within that blue line.
Sometimes the mapping does have uh an intermixing of two different soil types when you're in a transition from one type to another. I've seen that with colony archock soils on some slopes up in Aronicoi. Say it's a transition or a mixture of these different soil types from one zone to another. But that's a general statement. I'm not speaking specifically to your concern.
Well, I just, I understand your, your soil report that you did was based upon the Venesia mapping. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. So I'm, I'm kind of confused as to what, what source of that information was that some of the Venesia mapping.
Did you want to make a phone call?
But I think there's, there's two ways to, to resolve that is we could have Venesia clarify that. Um, and, and I guess my question is if, if he can attest to that and clarify that, is that sufficient? Right? And, and that's part of,
Yeah.
you know, my, my concern in all of this and that's, you know, with the board, just trying to get an understanding of if there are any other concerns out there other than what we're discussing today with regard to the soils. I mean, we, we've got an application.
I think the answer, I think the answer that recorded, I don't believe we do. I think the soils is the one thing that we have left.
Okay.
I don't think we have hit upon anything else and that we believe that's there. Now, so in thinking this over as we're talking about this, um, it seems that we need, well, my recommendation, and let me see how you guys think about this, would be to to basically continue this, this someday, and I'm, I'll hold the date open until you hear what I've got to say. But I think that the applicant and staff need to sit down with the engineer and let's clear off exactly what we expect and need. And then with that, when we come back, we'll be very clear whether we need the actual borrowings, whether the engineer is okay with it, whether what Ron brought up about the, the mapping compared to the soil types. We have that meeting and get down to the bottom of exactly what we feel we need, staff. I can be in a meeting as well. And we'll talk about it. Let's get it straight. So we don't turn around number one and incur the applicant a significant amount of cost above and beyond what we need to have. So that the engineer and staff and the board can make a determination based on the soil types. Does that make sense, Tim? I think I'm okay with it. Jared, what do you think?
No, I'm fine with that. I'm just.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with that.
So, our next meeting is, I know the resolution said to the 17th of July. Right?
Yeah, because you only have one meeting in July.
That's right. We only have one meeting in July. So July 17th.
Is there, uh, and I apologize, there's another meeting in June, correct?
Yes. Yeah, but by the time you guys have the meeting, when you decide what we want, everything would be almost I say impossible to get everything out in time for that. And upon a name on that agenda to start with, that's going to be a package in. So let's plan on the 17th of July. But it's incumbent upon you guys to get with staff and we sit down and have this meeting early as we can so we know what's going on. And heaven forbid if we get, if the applicant knows exactly what we're looking for, maybe through that meeting, it can be completed before we even have the next meeting. Does that make any sense? Jim, does that make sense? Ron, am I making sense or am I?
Well, I, I would suggest that maybe we continue this public hearing to your meeting on the 19th, is it? And if.
June 19th.
June 19th?
Yeah.
And at that time, you have a report back from staff as to what they have found from the meeting with everybody, from Venesia to uh identify what's going on.
Okay.
And at that point, if you have enough information, then you can click close the public hearing and directly seek your documents to be prepared for your meeting on the 17th. I mean, that saves time for the same month. July 17th, to say to him, well, we're going to knock windows. You know, I like Jim, but I don't want to see him here every night.
So, June 19th, okay, Tim? That means we got it in the next couple of weeks. We got to get this meeting set up.
Yeah, I, Ron, Ron has been very cooperative in, in helping out there, so I'm, I'm confident we can get that done.
Okay. So then, what we have is, and basically a continuation request. We can't really use this resolution.
It would be.
So let's just, let's just do a continuation to June 19th, requesting a report from staff of a meeting with the surveyors, the rest of Jim's team, as well as engineering and the staff. And you can invite me if I'm available, I'll be there and then we'll know from then. Exactly. Everybody be on the same sheet of music theoretically. And we'll go from there because this board is pretty good about taking guidance. Certainly we don't take anything much more than that, but from staff and how we move forward. So, you guys are okay with that? You guys are okay with that?
But Jim, if you could give Dan a email letting him know what days that you're available and try to work around this Pedro and Lance, you know, these people.
Okay, so the, the continuation and resolution is that it'll be continued until June at 19th meeting. Uh, where we expect a report from staff on a meeting between the uh surveyor, Jim's team, and well as staff. Are we okay with that? Board?
Okay.
Okay, do I have somebody to boot that? Boot by Adrian, second by. Doug, any other comments? Book, take a roll call vote please.
Felicia?
Hi.
Adrian Bellis?
Hi.
Doug?
Hello, Keith?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you. Sorry it was more painful than I thought it was going to be.
Thank you though for your input.
All right. They're easy now. We'll move on. Thank you, guys. All right, next item up is the preliminary five lot re-subdivision of appearing to Hollander Design. You can step away. Okay, Adrian's recusing himself from this project, so come on up, tell us what's going on.
Good evening, I'm Scott Mahalder.
Scott, how you doing?
Very good. I'm prepared with the five lot subdivision.
Yep.
The owner and the engineer. Um, our proposal is to develop five lots on about 12 and a half acres. Uh, on the parcel that's um bound by County Road 8. And um uh at the corner of March Road as well.
Hold.
I'm sorry, Hold's Road. Um, we proposed uh three lots. Uh, we'd have driveways off the County Road East side. Uh, and two lots would have uh driveways off the Hold's Road side. Lots ranging size from one to uh 5.1 acres in size. It's like the average lot is much larger than the one, two or in the two acre.
Right.
Um, we prepared with our uh plat, uh a site plan for the lots, showing how each one of those potentially could develop into um residential building lots. Each lot has a conventional septic system, acceptable site distance. Uh, and is, we showed a grading solution for each one of those lots. Our understanding is that the, the process from this point would be uh to consider uh our application for public hearing uh tonight and then also maybe for seeker. And then the, the process would proceed through a final uh subdivision application and each individual lot would come back to the board for site plan.
Okay. Yeah, because this is just a re-subdivision at this point. Ron?
Yeah, we did complete a coordinated review.
Yeah.
Within involved agencies. No objection to the planning board being lead agency.
Right.
Um, once you declare yourself the lead agency, then you can act on the parts two and three that were part of your package.
Correct.
Um, anticipating that that would be time-saving between now and the next time. Um, and then the uh conditions of approval for the preliminary plat. Um.
For preliminary re-subdivision, yeah, okay.
Were sent to the applicant and I haven't heard anything, so I assume that everything's good.
Cool.
You, so you're ready to make your, your designation of lead agency, then accept parts two and three, and then do seeker determination of significance, and then you can act on the preliminary plat.
Cool. Okay. Oh. Anything?
Nothing at this.
Okay, engineer, you got anything for us, Colin?
Nope.
Okay. Um, this is public hearing. Do you have anyone here to speak for or against this application?
I just have a question.
You can tell us who you are and where you live and then you can ask your question.
And Janie Brisham, I live on County Road 8, right next to this lot.
Okay.
Where. Um, that front area where that field is before those trees, when it rains, there's a lot of water there and it goes into my side yard and goes under my driveway into the pond. And then from the pond, it goes into next to the shelves. So what, how is that going to work out with septic tanks and all that stuff? Like, did you, did it perk? Did it?
Yeah.
I'd be happy to talk to those. So first, first I would say, um, your dog is awesome. Seen a couple of.
Oliver? His name's Oliver.
Yeah, Oliver, it's a wonderful situation.
Thank you.
Yeah, we've avoided that area for development. Um, so uh that, that parcel, part of the parcel would be part of the five acre lot. And our intention is to actually use that um impoundment that's happening naturally and uh make improvement there. So we'll actually hold back more water. And any imperviousness that we're adding to the site, our hydro calculation to show would be mitigated. We'll store the water in that location and it won't have an offset impact. So that'll all be on lot five on our side of the problem.
And part of what our engineers will review very clearly is making sure that when we're done with the project and its design, that no more than is now coming off the property will come on. There'll be the same amount or less typically less because they're doing a better or a complete job in creating stormwater retention, some of the rest. So, in theory, that's the way it's supposed to work.
Hey, I'm her son. I live.
This is my son.
I live. What's your name? Go ahead. My name's TJ. Okay. And I think what she's kind of getting at is that once the septic systems are in, she's concerned about the septic system like getting into the dirt and then make contaminating the pond, turning the pond nasty because of, you know, where all of a sudden now new five houses are going, are leaching into an area that is floods every now and then. She's concerned about like septic tanks like not perking right and contaminating her pond is what she's kind of mostly concerned about. Because whatever the water floods and flowed, I mean, it's, it's going to be what it is.
Yeah. Um, we've got a significant separation from the proposed septic system locations and that was one of the things that we showed on our site plan layout too, for consideration because the lot lines that we're proposing here as part of the subdivision, if we didn't make consideration for the septic system, the house and the drainage, you know, we'd wind up with something that didn't work. So we really spent the time at this stage to make sure that what we're proposing from lot line perspective uh accomplishes that. Now, relative to the infiltration rate and if there's going to be some sort of contamination, that is not a worry. Our perp rates were acceptable and all of the um affluent from the septic tanks would be directed to an infiltration field. There would be no services.
Okay. Any other public comments? Okay, so what we have here is a, we have received both of uh that part two and three. Uh, we have a resolution to designate ourselves as the lead agency. We have a resolution to, to determine seeker's significance. And then we have the resolution for the five lot re-subdivision. Did you got to review all those? Any issues with any of those resolutions?
No issues.
Okay. So we, the first, well, we, we need to close public hearing.
Okay.
Hey, first thing we do, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? Move, move that Doug, second by. Tim, any other comments? I'll figure if I was saying aye. Aye, public hearing is closed. Didn't miss that one up this time.
You're done?
Do it one time and you learn. Um, okay, so we have the parts two and three. Do we have a resolution for the seeker designation of lead agency? And acceptance of part two and three. Do I have a motion to wait of reading and approve that resolution?
Oh.
Move by Doug, second by Tim. Any other comments? Court take a roll call vote please.
Felicia?
Aye.
Kalbi?
Aye.
Helen?
Aye. Okay, have a resolution of seeker determination of non-significance. Do I have a motion to wait of reading and approve that resolution as presented?
Okay, bye.
Second by Tim, second by Doug. Doug, any other comments? Court take a roll call vote please.
Felicia?
Aye.
Kalbi?
Aye.
Aye. Last, lastly, we have resolution five lot re-subdivision approval with conditions. Do I have a motion to wait of reading and approve that resolution with conditions?
So we'll. Not second.
Boot to second. And any other comments? Court take a roll call vote please.
Felicia?
Aye.
Kalbi?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you're good to go. Get that, get that uh preliminary re-subdivision in. We're going to turn around, get it signed, you get the final in, we'll get this thing rolled.
Thank you very much.
Sound good? Okay. All right, Adrian, you can come back up. Okay, next item up is open discussion. Ron?
Yeah, we had the first progress meeting today with the contractor doing the work on the sidewalk.
Okay, cool.
Trail connection. And uh.
All right, click your door, please. Okay, go ahead, Ron.
Yeah, they, they started over on Antonio 41.
Uh huh.
Between the trail crossing there on 41 and 332. Um, it boxed out two areas for sidewalks and they started constructing the trail connection uh between 41 and the Auburn Trail. That's really going to be a nice hot walking trail back.
Sweet, nice.
Pictures are really, really nice. Uh, we're waiting on the bridge specifications from the uh manufacturer and then a review and approval by the engineers. Um, expect that will be coming along here at the end of July, August, and uh they will be working with the Myers campers and Myers RV. Myers has purchased that parcel of land to the north of where the sidewalk ends there on Martensia. Up to the manufactured home park.
Oh, okay.
The woods.
And, and Mike realizes, Mike Finer realizes he's got to uh put a sidewalk in there, so he's going to use the opportunity to work with contractor outside of the scope of the uh ramp.
Good.
To get that in sooner than later. So um, that's pretty much it. We're expecting this week, next week, the ninth. Um, the uh drawings for Farmington Market Center so that we can start that process.
Yeah.
And we're waiting for the uh consultant uh attorney to submit the list of permitted uses that they um would like to see for the Whitestone incentive zoning project.
Good.
Over there on 332. And the only other thing that I, I assume you all have heard that uh Mark Stevens has passed and no longer with us. He's the gentleman that developed the Pathways Corners Project. Um, well, I wish they'd make more contractors like him because
Eh, for sure. There's no doubt.
The man gave you his word and he stood by it.
So it's one of the good ones.
He was. That's it for now.
Okay. Oh.
Colin, I said it better myself.
You're good. Okay. Uh, Colin, you got anything?
Nope.
Okay, short there. Okay, for me, um, I just wanted to ask staff to do me a personal favor and keep on top of this follow-up project. Wish I could get that meeting done so we can get what we need the next time around and get this thing rolling. Honestly, like I said, I don't mind seeing Jim, but I've seen him too much, so let's get this thing pushed. Okay, that's my comments. Uh, we do have a couple on the public hearing. Would you like to comment, say anything? Okay. Alrighty, uh, board have anything?
Nope.
Adrian doesn't have anything? What's going on? Uh,
It's all bad.
Go ahead.
Real interesting stuff.
Oh, I like interesting stuff.
No, I just found out this week that it worked. It came to our attention that the DEC is looking at changing some of the wetland regulations.
Hmm.
So it's just something to be probably keep eye on in the future that some of these older regulations might be changed. And uh, some of their classifications like the old wetland maps that DEC have, the Obama's, you know, rules, they go away. They're just for guidance.
Old soil maps go away?
No.
Okay. I'm just, yeah, just for what it's worth.
Just a reaction most of the time.
All these sounds are being recorded and
I know, well, I had to answer the question.
Yeah, but anyways, they were, you know, the wetland map with these
Yeah.
engineers. So it's determined that there's areas, well,
Yeah.
these new regs, it would be, you know, those are guidelines. You're still responsible for
Right.
identify any site. A lot of other things in there as well. Something just we should probably keep an eye on. Moves into
Well, anything to state still, we certainly want to keep an eye on.
Yeah.
For sure. Anybody have anything else? Motion to adjourn from Adrian, seconded by Doug. Any other comments? Oh.
Um, John, Chris, and the six zero two two Redfield.
You know, we cannot talk about that project in any way, shape or fashion because you're outside of the public hearing. You can talk to us about anything else, but you can't talk to us about that project because it is in a public hearing state that is adjourned. So we cannot talk to you about that unless it's in the next public hearing.
Now, is that including the solar project?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the solar project I'm talking about.
Okay. Um, unfortunately, I won't be able to be here on the team, but I did put together a list of uh, concerns that the Redfield tribe people have.
Yep, you can submit anything you want to us and it can be given, given it to us. We can take care of all of that. Absolutely. I just don't want to get caught in you providing us any information on that project outside the public hearing because that would be, I won't say illegal, but certainly outside the realm of the rules that we operate by from the state of New York.
Okay.
Okay?
I'm not, I'm not going to argue.
I thought you, I thought, I thought you were from Redfield. I was pretty sure of that, but I was hoping you weren't going to talk about that project.
Well, let me pass this out. I think it
All right, don't pass us out anything. You've got something to submit and it to clerk. We'll take care of it.
All right, um, and it'll give you guys a little bit of a head start uh, because the meeting will be in two weeks and it will, you know, address some of the issues.
Appreciate it. Staff will take care of it. We can't talk about it. Okay? With that, any other comments? Ron?
So whatever is being given tonight.
Okay, guys, just stop for a second over here. Go ahead, Ron.
Whatever is being given tonight to John needs to be regiven at the public hearing. So it's entered into the public hearing record of what it is that's being submitted.
Yeah, so go ahead and keep that until, just have somebody else bring it to the public hearing and give it to the public hearing.
Okay.
That's just a, we, we got to be very careful because when we end up in court either side, we got to make sure we've done all the right thing. Okay?
Correct.
So take that back with you and submit it by somebody else that night of the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay? Anything else? Okay, with that, I have a motion to adjourn by Adrian, seconded by Doug. Any other comments? Clerk, or all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. I hate to say that to you. I just want to make sure we do it according to the rules.
Right.